Budget.
Yep, all right. Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the Commission, those joining us in person today as as well as those watching us virtually. Welcome to today's annual budget workshop. The goal of today's workshop is to review the interim budget developed by the CEO's office in conjunction with our elected officials and department heads here in the county, as well as our our component units. I want to sincerely thank, first off, all of our departments and elected officials who utilized the various tools that we've put together through time, baseline budget tool, the the five-year and 30-year capital plan, strategic initiatives, and happy to report that we're presenting to you today a balanced budget for FY24 that fully funds all operational needs, capital needs requested by our departments, and human capital needs while maintaining a strong cash reserve position. The budget heavily focuses on public safety, which is a recurring theme from last year, recruiting and retaining of county staff, and of course focused on strategic initiative implementation as we move forward with that plan. Big kudos to Kim Martin and Travis Cisco for putting everything together this year and getting ready for today's meeting. It takes a lot of work to get this done in a timely manner. And then, of course, Jim Cox for his continued mentorship and assistance as well. So we're glad he's still here for this workshop. Ultimately, this interim budget, Ms. Martin will will touch on this, will be presented to you at the May 23 Commission meeting. So the intent today, at least with this item, we do have two action items that will follow at the end of the meeting you saw on the agenda that we need to get some direction from you there. But we also are here to get your input and feedback on the interim budget. And then ultimately, we would present those requested changes, if you have any, at the May 23 meeting. Today's format is really casual. We purposely set it up this way to just allow for free-flowing conversation, questions when they come to you. So I'll defer to the chairs to how you want to handle that if you'd like questions to come directly to you. But we're okay with with answering as as you all may have things come to mind. So this won't be the last time, nor will May 23 be the last time you see this budget. Once the fiscal year is closed, the end of June, we'll have a final budget adjustment that's processed, and then we'll bring to you a final budget for approval at the end of July. You know, keep in mind that this whole process, at least with a budget, is really our best educated guess of activity for the next 12 months, both on the revenue and expense side. It's a living and breathing document. And so, you know, of course, we'll always be carefully monitoring a staff, any any changes, fluctuations in revenue, positive or negative. You know, new grants that we receive obviously impact the budget, and then any changes that might occur with with expenditures. You know, we're trying to do as much forecasting as we can, as much planning as we can, but inevitably the unforeseen's that come up. So so a lot to cover today, as you can tell by the enormous pile of paperwork in front of you. I'm sorry for that, but we we got a lot of ground to cover and and we'll try to get through it all in a quick, speedy at manner. And we do have some special guests with us, I want to point out. With our component units, the San Juan Water Commission, Aaron Chavez, the executive directors here with the I-1-1 Communications Authority, Nicole Brown is the executive directors here, and also their their chair, George Duncan, and the sheriff who serves on that board as well, S. Chief Vega are on that board as well. So appreciate them being here. In the interest of their time, we thought we would go through our our overall overview presentation on the budget with you. And then if you had any specific questions for them, like you to be able to, you know, ask them those if you have any, and then allow them to go on with their day so they don't have to spend four hours with us like everyone else, or at least everyone at this table. We're kind to our guests.
Okay.
Commissioner Beckstead. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Ms. Martin and Mr. Cisco to to go through our our budget presentation.
Awesome. Thank you, Mr. Stark, Chairman, Commissioners. As Mr. Stark had indicated, I'm very pleased to pronounce, to state that we are presenting a balanced budget. The balanced budget from terms of what that means means that we're meeting all of the state requirements. The general fund, the state requires that we have three twelfths reserve of our expenditures for the general fund and one twelfth reserve for the road fund. And we've met those requirements comfortably. So and as I go through this, you'll see how everything is being tracked and handled. So with that being said, we'll go to the budget calendar. So just so that you know what our process is for how we go through the budget process. Starting in February, March timeframe, I start pulling together the information needed for the budget. I I have spreadsheets that I send out to the departments, and then the departments send back their information to me with their requested budget. And then so that's and that's happens like in April, at the end, at the end of March, I go through and I have my my actuals through March 31. And then I send that out to the departments, and I requested that they return their budgets back to me by April 15, I think it was 17 this year, so that I have time to go through and analyze everything and get it into our detailed budget book so that we can see where we're standing. I want to thank all of the departments and the elected officials for getting their information back to me timely, so I had time to to do what I needed to do. After the departments send me back all of their information and I put it into this spreadsheet, I meet with the CEO's office, and we kind of go through and see where we're falling out, if we're meeting the required reserves, if there's areas that we need to work on to to try and make sure that we are presenting a balanced budget. After I meet with the CEOs, then we do this meeting, which is the budget workshop, and we get your feedback as to how you would like to see the budget be, and if there's areas that you feel that we need to adjust accordingly. Then on May 23, we will bring to you an interim budget with any changes that you may have during this meeting and any changes that we may have that have that we recognize between now and the 23rd. With that being said, once that's approved, we will be sending it to DFA. It has to be to DFA by June 1. DFA will review, and then they will approve it and by by July 1, and that will become our interim budget that we will operate off of come July 1, 2023 for FY24 until the final budget is presented by DFA and approved by September 6. So we'll go on to the next page, a balanced budget. As I'd mentioned at the very beginning of my presentation, our our budget is balanced. We do meet the reserve requirements of the general fund, which is three twelfths of the general fund expenditures. We also meet the requirements of the one twelfth for the road fund. And as you as you look at the budget, you'll see that the revenues may not necessarily match expenditures. And a lot of that has to do with the fact that we have special revenue funds that have dedicated revenue to them that the 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 general fund can't use for any purpose that they see that it's specific for that special revenue. And they're going to be spending down their cash balances. And that's also true with the grants fund. We have revenues that are specific to specific grants that cannot be used for anything other than those purposes. And you'll see that they'll spend down that cash balance as well. Going on to the budget highlights. Maybe I have fingers to work. There we go. So whenever we sit down to analyze the revenue for this year's budget, it's, you know, I worked with Jim, and we kind of reviewed the the gross receipts tax because it has been coming in high. It's about 20% over our current budget for FY23. But in order to be able to be fiscally conservative, you know, we want to analyze it and make sure that we're not over budgeting revenues. And then something happened economically, you know, either we have an economic downturn or something catastrophic happens, and now we were relying on those revenues, and now we're in a shortfall and we're in a in a bad position. So we try to make sure that we budget very conservatively to make sure that we have the the funds to be able to operate and provide our citizens the services that they need and require. So with that being said, we budgeted the GRT with a 12% increase over FY23's GRT budget. And whenever we analyzed it, we were looking at the retail trade and wholesale industry. And whenever we looked at it, we were, there was a 16.75% increase over 22's taxable revenue. So that's that's a huge increase. But like I said, you know, we are wanting to look at it from a conservative conservative standpoint. We don't want to over budget and and anticipate that that's going to continue into '24. That's why we went with the 12%. Mining, quarrying, and oil and gas extraction industry also increased by 94.75% over 22's taxable revenue. With oil and gas, this is the GRT portion of it. We don't think of oil and gas as a recurring revenue because it's so volatile. We've seen it, you know, go boom and then go bust. And it's, so we really look at the oil and gas as a one-time revenue, and we try to utilize those revenues for one-time sources expenditures. So and then we also have the healthcare assistance fund where the GRT is split. We we currently have 75% being budgeted to HCAP and 25% to the general fund. And then going on to property tax, currently, the residential property tax valuation has seen about a 6% increase, and the non-residential is about a 2% increase. The primary reason why residential has gone up is based on CNBC, they noted that Farmington's MSA has the largest home value increase in the United States in 2022 by 20.3%. So that's a huge increase. So yeah, it's positive for us, but on the flip side, it also drives property taxes up because the values go up. And then as far as one-time revenues go, we try to budget conservatively with our payment in lieu of taxes or pilt because that's that's money that we receive from the federal government, and it generally comes around the end of June is whenever we receive that. And that's something that the federal government could could take away. I mean, if they consider that to be low, low-hanging fruit, they may, we may not get it. So we try to budget that conservatively, and we try not to rely on it as part of our our revenue sources. So we, this year, we budgeted 2.5 million. And then GRT equalization, we brought that down just a little bit, just because GRT has been up. There's a potential that we may not be eligible for the GRT equalization in FY24. So we we kind of budgeted it down and not really relying on those revenues. Moving on to budget highlights and revenues, as you can see, our revenues for FY24 is at 133.4 million dollars. So with that being said, made driving, major driving factors that increased the revenues is GRT and oil and gas. Oil and gas has been budgeted higher than it has been in previous years, just due to the current economic conditions in the market.
Next slide, right?
Yes. Sorry.
Yep.
But as I've mentioned before, we don't count on these revenues to cover recurring costs. So as you can see in this slide here, whoops, that one, there we go. And as you can see on this slide here, gross receipts tax is our biggest revenue generator for recurring revenue. That's, you know, a positive thing for our area. We have people coming in from all over the place. We have people coming from Colorado, people coming from the reservation. They come into Farmington, and they help contribute to our revenue sources that help us serve our county. So and we don't have to rely on property tax where some other counties do. They have to rely on that property tax to be able to fund their their expenditures. Let's see here. And we've also been very fortunate that we've been awarded numerous grants. We have received LATCF, which is part of ARPA. We've received the ARPA funding. We've also received the LERF for the Sheriff's Department, which is helping us to pay retention bonuses and and recognize that their service is important to our community. Going to the next slide, oil and gas production and equipment production, we budgeted a 1.5% increase over FY23 budget. And and then the equipment is based on the prior year production. And as I've mentioned before, it's basically a one-time revenue source due to its volatility. So yes, I've only budgeted a 1.5% increase. However, that's kind of a, it kind of helps us budgetarily because if I don't, if I don't budget, you know, like 100% of what we could anticipate to see, it gives us some room to have that extra revenue coming in as a one-time revenue source that we could increase to help cover something that may happen unexpectedly that we did not anticipate. So it does help us budgetarily by doing that. FY24 expenditures for payroll. So I'm going to preface this that I'm going to cover some things. But then after my presentation, Ms. Wood will be coming up and be giving more detailed information regarding the market survey and the health insurance. So I'm just going to kind of touch on some high points. So the proposed salary projections that's in this budget includes a market survey of and a 1% COLA and a 3% merit increase. In this budget also is the para increase for both employee and employer at 0.5%. And then the health insurance employer cost increase. And then the health insurance employer cost increase, we saw about a 30% increase. And that's the projected amount if we were to use a half year of self-funded with Taltree and a half year going to the state plan. If we were to stay 100% self-funded with Taltree, we would have seen. We would have seen a 48% increase in our healthcare premiums that the county would have been responsible to cover. With the split, the proposed budget reflects I'm half self-funded and that's at a 77 23 split. So the employer picks up 77%, the employee picks up 23%. If we move to the state plan, it'll be an 80 20 split. So the county would pick up 80% and the employee would only have to pick up 20%. So, and if we were to do a full year of the state plan, we would see a 21% decrease. In the amount of premiums that the county would have to pay to pay for their, their health plan.
Let me just interject there quickly, if I could. We'll get more detail from Ms. Wood when she covers this, but as you know, that's been trending in a, in a poor direction with the subsidy. That you all have been gracious enough to bring forth to the medical plan to make sure that our employees are receiving the associated benefits there. 400,000, three years ago, 900,000, 1.6 million in this current budget year. And what Ms. Martin's referring to is if we were to continue self-funded, that subsidy would increase up, increase to $2 million. And so obviously that's not a good trend. It's not sustainable. We have some very positive news to share with employee feedback regarding the plan, proposed plan changes, but we'll cover that afterwards. But I just want you to be aware of how those numbers track and will flow into what you'll see here in just a bit.
Thank you, Mr. Stark. And then moving on with the market survey. With the market survey, we're going to see about a $671,000 increase. And then Ms. Wood will go into more detail about what positions that covers. The 1% COLA will be 327,946 dollars. And a 3% merit will be 542,731. And the reason why the 1% COLA and the 3% merit don't seem to walk hand in hand is because whenever we budget the merit, we're basing it up based on the employee's evaluation date. So you won't see a one for one on that. Let's see here. And then we have 21 frozen positions and we do have a handout for that. So if you'd like to see what positions are, are frozen. Gonna lose my lunch and everything. There we go.
So to that page to everybody, Kim, they've got it.
Yeah. So it says frozen positions in the upper left-hand corner.
All right, give us a second. This one right here.
And then there's one, the one that looks like this, there's also a new positions one. So in the frozen positions, we do have 21 positions. Adult detention has eight positions that are frozen. Alternative sentencing has four. Finance has two. Juvenile has four. Parks has one and solid waste has two. So, and then we also have new positions that we're proposing in this budget. And that, those include the purchasing coordinator, marketing assistant for CEO's office. The fire engineer for the SJC squad. We have a GIS analyst to help Sharice in the GIS department. Lower Valley, we are asking for an office assistant and solid waste, we're looking for a lead community resource technician. And I believe Mr. Stark was one.
Sure. If I could just quickly add, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, you know, we don't take lightly adding new positions. We're quite cognizant of where we've been over the last 12 to 13 years and some of the pain we suffered when, when we saw a decline in oil and gas and other economic activity. But we are in a better position and we're looking forward to the future and trying to make sure we're meeting the needs of the citizens. And, and so the purchasing coordinator, you know, that was an office back in the days, we had five employees that were providing those services. Today we have three and with the volume of grants that we're receiving, unfortunately, that's, that's good news, you know, federal and state grants. It's easy. Once you get the money now, you actually have to go, you have to actually go implement the project and purchasing is seeing an inundation of, of. POs and other contract requests to actually pull these projects off. And so that's why that position's in there. A marketing assistant in our office, this would be somebody who would directly help Mr. Neely. In his day-to-day activities as he's trying to coordinate marketing and printing and, and social media for the entire county. And it's quite frankly, it's, it's, he's done a lot with a, it's a one-person, one-person show. And so he, he's drowning and could definitely use some help in that area if we want to continue to provide the type of service and messaging that citizens have come. To really appreciate from San Juan County. Fire engineer, this would be somebody county fire engineer stationed at the Bloomfield station that would, would be staffed with volunteers. To have the county squad up and operating 24/7 365, which it's not today. So it would fill in gaps where we lack service during three days a week. Is that correct, Chief?
Six day effective right now. This would make it seven day effective, 48.
4896. Yep. So it would give us complete coverage down there and it's been proven to be a really valuable asset to the, you know, city of Bloomfield as well as San Juan County. GIS analyst, that's another office that at one time we had four FTEs and an intern back in, I call it the glory days. And, and we're down to one. We, that was an area in which we cut and Sharice does a fantastic job as the GIS manager, but she needs some help. And we want to be able to increase the level of service relative to GIS. There's so much that you can do with it. And it'd be helpful to have an assistant, an assistant analyst in that role. Senior centers, office assistant, one. So we used to work through the. All the. Senior, senior was the, the. The nonprofit that we had that administered senior services through the county. Northwest to Mexico seniors provided, we funded them and they provided services to the lower valley senior center and Blanco senior center. That, that contract changed. They were no longer interested in doing that. The city of Farmington has since assumed the contract and we work with them. To provide services countywide and funding that flows through them to us. And, and here during COVID, we weren't required, very detailed requirements relative to paperwork. On making sure that folks qualify, seniors that qualify for home delivered meals. That all that paperwork has to be filled out, even those that come in for congregate meals to the facilities. And with the COVID restrictions being lifted, all the paperwork requirements have come back. And our staff is drowning and trying to keep up. And it's become quite obvious that we need some administrative assistance for both of our senior centers. And then last but not least, one of the strategic initiatives that you I know are fully behind is make us shine. And Mr. Perel and his crew are doing their best to clean up the county through voluntary cleanups, through public lands cleanups. But we have one lead community resource technician that can, that can take folks out specifically detainee labor now. We're able to, to, since COVID restrictions have been lifted, to, to take a supervisor along with some detainees and go clean up the county. And it would be very helpful for us to have another lead community resource technician to do that. And so that's why we're proposing these six new positions to you and certainly could stand for any questions if you had any relative to those.
I'm good.
So going to the next slide for payroll continued. Now we're going to touch on the three component units that we, we oversee. Communications authority has presented to their board and has been approved for a 3% COLA and a 1% merit increase. And criminal justice training authority is going to be following suit with what San Juan County is doing. Doing a 1% COLA and a 3% merit increase. And San Juan Water Commission has presented a 6.4 COLA, 6.4% COLA and 11.58% merit increase for one employee. They also are requesting to reclass one position and then they have one frozen position. On the next slide, talking about capital. So in our budget, we have our five-year capital and then we also have our 30-year capital plan. The 30-year capital plan, we've been doing it for the last three years. And thanks to all of our one-time revenue sources and everything in Jim's awesome spreadsheet. We've been able to fully fund our 30-year capital plan. And being able to move forward with what we would like to. What we would like to do in, and I believe it is the spreadsheet here, the 30-year capital plan.
And Kim, if I may interrupt. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, it's actually this staple packet, 21 pages. We wanted to provide you with, with the actual entire plan itself. It is a very good read, Mr. Chairman. So you're trying to read it.
Very small print.
Yeah, small print. But you know, Commissioner McDaniel's kind of the, as a background, historically, we, we worked with, with the commission on this plan. We're, San Juan County is actually in a really good position. Where if you look at our debt service as compared to maybe other governments, you know, when you look at governmental funding, that the large majority of funding is, is through debt issuance. Because that's how you get the capital that you need to be able to sustain operations, provide those services to the citizens of the county. Well, we've, we've been able to over, and it's been a, quite the, the project. And certainly thank all of our county departments working with us on this. But we've really set out, we look at a plan, you know, we're looking at a very wide range, but those large costly items. What, what are we going to have in place and what, what's needed next fiscal year, what's needed 15 years from now? It includes updates to buildings, maybe new buildings, different infrastructure, water lines. It includes large capital equipment purchases. What are those needs? If we can create this into one, one plan that we call the 30-year plan, it's going to help us figure out how, how can we make sure? That we fund all of these needs to be able to provide those, those services to the citizens. And so through that, we, we, starting, we had a very large hurdle to overcome. And it was the fact that we had more capital needs than funding in place. But we've gone through each of the, the different years. And I'm really truly excited with, with this plan that, that you all have, have looked at and, and are using going forward. With this plan, it is 21 pages again, because it's, it's looking at 30 years of, of capital improvements. But what we've been able to do is look at, our debt service is going to start dropping off as early as, as next fiscal year, we're going to see an increase. Where all of those funds that normally would fund principal and interest payments are now going to go into this plan to fund additional capital needs. Each year as that debt drops off, the last debt being 2038. Get that back. It might be a little bit later. We're, we're able to take, take that cash and again, add it to capital. This plan itself has actually fully funded all of the capital needs that were identified for 2024. It fully funds 25, 26 and 27. Now Ms. Martin had mentioned, you know, it, it's really through a lot of our, our budgeting practices where we've been conservative budgeting. Which has allowed a lot of one-time sources of funding that we're able to utilize those, those sources to, to fund those needs. The, the last part, I, I keep saying it's an exciting plan, truly because it is and how we're, we're able to do this. But in 2028, we actually have excess dollars that normally go to debt service that now we can provide for, for new needs. Maybe it's whether it be a new building, maybe it be new equipment. You know, if we stick with this plan, we're able to fully accomplish a lot of our goals that, that have been set in place by the departments. Lastly, with, with. This, this plan in place. We did actually submit it for an ECO achievement award, something that, you know, we think because it's, it's just so unique that governments. Who traditionally fund this through debt service, we're not going to fund it through debt service. Now, it's, it's not to say that, that, you know, we're going to fully fund it internally. Our, our goal and it will continue and will remain, if there's funding of any type, whether it's grant funding, whether it's, you know, state capital outlay. Any of those funding sources that we can get, we will apply for it. Because not only does that help bring dollars into our county, but it helps offset this plan. So if we can take those funds, use it for the purchase of these planned items, that just adds more, where we can do more for the citizens of San Juan County. So, you know, please take a look at it. If you have any questions, certainly we're glad to, to answer those. Really the key takeaway is, is the, the way the plan is set today, it is, it's fully funding. And as you'll see in the budget today, all of our capital needs for FY 24 are included within the budget, just because we've been able to follow this, this plan.
Thank you, Mr. Cox. And then also just to, to let you all know that this is the interim budget for our capital expenditures. Between interim and final, we'll be going through the process of asking for PO carryovers. And it's probably going to be quite a bit just due to supply chain issues. We've had numerous departments not able to get vehicles or like the sheriff's department, they haven't been able to get their equipment in. But they've had POs for all year long and they're just trying to get that information, those, those capital items in. So there will be a difference between interim and final and you'll see an increase in the capital expenditures for that.
Do you want to refer to this sheet because?
Oh, yes, sorry. And then there's also a sheet that's San Juan County FY 24 capital schedule and it's the interim budget. And it, it's small print again.
And so that, just to share, so Jim's 30-year plan that we've been able to put together, that flows into this document. So you'll see capital items that are listed that specifically say 30-year. That are related to the large infrastructure and, and capital intensive departments, public works, parks and facilities. That, that's what you see within the 30-year plan. And then we have the other departments that are requesting through our five-year capital planning tool. They're rolling in the projects that they had requested for FY 24. With exception of some, you know, things that come up that, you know, break or need to be funded. There were only two vehicles that were not funded because they didn't meet the commission-approved replacement policy. But we were able to make a transfer work for one of those and for juvenile services. And the clerk's office is transferring a Trailblazer and, and that allows them to get a new vehicle and allows juvenile services to meet their needs. So, but outside of that, every request, with the exception of a couple others that have been postponed for other fiscal years, are included within this capital budget.
Thank you. So going on to the expenditures for special revenue funds and component units. This is just a quick snapshot of a couple of special revenue funds that, that we, we look at. So like corrections, road fund, major medical, H cap, communications and water commission. 50% of the overall expenditures in this budget are considered to be special revenue funds. And that's funds that are impacted by restricted revenue sources that the county does not have any control over. So, and then our, and then this includes any transfers that the general fund has to send over to help subsidize these various funds. And then also just to bring to your attention, there's a San Juan County interim budget change, FY 24 to FY 23, it has blue. This kind of a lot gives you a quick snapshot of how the, the various departments are compared to the last year's budget. And you can see what the percent change is on the far right-hand side of the paper.
Ms. Farm, may I? You know, when we say that the, the county doesn't have any control over, I just want to kind of reiterate that it's, it's not for the fact, it's defined for a specific purpose. So have the control of the, the money coming in, but we've got to make sure, you know, if we look at it from a grant perspective, we have specific criteria that those funds can be utilized. And so it's not something that we could take those sources into another purpose. That's what we say when we don't have control over it. It's just for that defined reason.
Thank you for that clarification. Thank you for that clarification. So, and then going to the next slide, the, the capital for the interim budget. You can see that in FY17, we, we had a lot of capital expenditures and that's primarily based on the 2015 revenue bonds that we had purchased for, for capital purposes. And then you'll see that it slowly goes back down. We fully expended the 2015 revenue bonds in FY22. And then when you look at FY24, just know that that increase is primarily due to the 30-year capital and us looking at capital expenditures that, that within that 30-year plan. And then FY24 general fund highlights, 22% of the, of the total budgeted, 22% of the general fund's expenditures is of, of the total expenditures. Total budgeted FY24 revenues is 68,258,935. And total budgeted transfers out is 50,490,876. We have 0.7 million transfers going, coming into the general fund and 2.6 million into debt service and 36 million to supplement, supplement special revenue fund expenditures in excess of revenues. And then the general fund reserve requirement is in excess of the state mandate by 53%. But that, that 53% does help us with any unexpected, you know, economic downturn. If a recession was to hit, if GRT was to take a sudden downturn, that extra reserve requirement does help us to be able to continue to provide the services that we need for our citizens.
And I might mention too, that does not include, as the commission made the decision to set aside 4 million in the risk management fund to provide us $10 million of liability coverage. That's not included in that 53% reserve number. And you might see within your budget, we'll talk about that in detail later. And fun, you'll see the $4 million that is sitting as an ending cash balance in the interim budget. So just want to point that out, that that is there and separate of the 53% reserve.
And also, I might add the, the grants.
Grants.
Grants has a $5 million ending cash balance and that's to help with any grant match that we may have to come up with to help with new grants that we receive and also the 30-year capital plan. So, moving on to the FY24 debt service fund highlights, we have 27,650,000 principal outstanding going into FY24. We have 3,485,000 budgeted principal payments in FY24. We have 1,236,738 budgeted interest payments in FY24. And then the NMFA loan for 2012 will be paid off in FY24 and that'll be a $498,000 savings every year going forward. And then the refunding revenue bonds for 2015A will be paid off in FY26 and that'll be a $1.8 million savings in debt service payments. And then we have no general obligation debt. We have not had any general obligation debt for the past 32 years, which is outstanding. And like in the beginning of my presentation, I had mentioned that our GRT revenues are, you know, we, we receive a lot of GRT, which helps us to be able to fund things. And we've been able to go out for revenue bonds rather than seeking voter approval for leveraging property tax to fund capital expenditures. So, and that is that debt that is backed by property taxes.
And I might add that, you know, when you see our debt service of 4.721 million for this year, and of course, the goal is that we have it fully paid off by 2038. That's the 30-year capital plan. Just so you know, that represents, that 4.7 million represents 2.7% of our total budget of 173 million. Pretty commendable. There are not a lot of government entities that can say they've got that low of a debt service ratio. So we're, you all should be proud of that, that we're able to provide services to the citizens and needed infrastructure without having to have an excessive amount of debt on the books.
And then the next slide is just a visual of our debt service and how the payments have trended over the years. And then my final slide is regarding the outside agencies. And we also have an outside agency sheet that has green across the top.
This one right here?
Yes, thank you. And the outside agencies is primarily driven by the commission and what they would like to see and fund for, for the various entities that are on, on this list. So.
So before you is, I had the opportunity to sit down with Chairman Lanier and Commissioner Fortner just to put together a draft. And so you can see, as you know, we have a process by which we send out applications to the various agencies, have them request funding for next year. Have them tell us if they received funding the previous year, how they used it, how they anticipate to receive or utilize the funding that they would like to, to request this year. A very comprehensive stack of applications that were emailed to you all previously. It's, it's a lot of information. I want to thank Ms. Gomez for helping us with compiling this. She also added a column showing what agencies are receiving United Way funding this year. So you kind of have an understanding of other revenue streams that might be coming in to these various agencies that are requesting funds. You can see the different categories and by which we've, we've, you know, put those different requests into various buckets. And the very last one, which we started last year, the very bottom is contract commitments. And so those are, are various groups that either by, by contract or by some type of already related association we're providing funding to. And so we've got the MPO, the Navajo Senior Centers, New Mexico State Extension Office, Project Graduation. I would want to highlight there that we did receive a request from San Juan College High School to be included with the other seven high schools that we previously funded, which are Aztec, Bloomfield, Pia D'Avista, Farmington, Kirtland Central, Shiprock, and Newcombe. And so there are eight at $1,000 that have been included for next year's project graduation. The Red Apple Transit, that funds the various stops that we have within the county that they provide to us. Escape program through the college with this is Southwest Accelerator Program. So if they have a local company that qualifies for entrepreneurial acceleration, there's resources that are surrounded with that local-based company, even though it's southwestern, I said southwest, it's Southwestern Colorado Accelerator Program. It specifically is, is set aside to help fund a local company with, in conjunction with San Juan College and the city of Farmington. And then our two senior centers, Aztec and Bloomfield, that the reason they're listed on there by contract is they deliver meals to us where we're not delivering in the unincorporated part of the county. So for us, Aztec north to the state line, that's county, but the city of Aztec is currently delivering there. And then west to Flora Vista and the city of Bloomfield covers south down 550 and west towards the city of Farmington down 64. And so those are beneficial contracts to us. We would have to be hiring additional employees and drivers to make those services happen if we didn't have those senior centers providing those services to us. And then Safe Communities, which is grant funding. We receive state funding that funds both Safe Communities and alternative sentencing. And so you're just seeing the grant-funded portion of 65,000 that historically has been channeled through to them. So we would stand for any changes or questions you might have regarding this list. Like I said, this was just a draft that was prepared. But if nothing else, just a discussion point, a starting point. So we would stand for any questions you have.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, Mr. Stark, Nigiezi is requesting a little help. And I'd like to get him, see if we can get him a little money for, from the budget for a, let me back up a minute. They, they're only one chapter, but they kind of serve as a hub for surrounding areas. They have a big coliseum there, as you know, and anyway, people congregate there. We're requesting a little bit of money to help them with a storage foundation building. It'd be the, just the money to lay the pad, I believe. And the whole thing is quite expensive, but I thought if we could get them, you know, maybe $15,000 to help it. It's going to be a lot more than that to, to do the pad correctly. But I don't think we could do the whole thing. But I'd like to see if we could get, get them, I propose maybe $15,000 for Nigiezi Chapter.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Mr. Stark, Shiprock Marathon, they didn't ask for anything? No? Okay.
Is that an organization you'd like to assist?
I know we, one year they did and then I, I guess they didn't pursue it to get, I know they do it annually and I was hoping they would make a request, but I guess they didn't.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Totachini, certainly if that's something you wanted to have us pursue, we could look at that. I mean, with this list, we presented with part of the interim budget on May 23rd, so.
Okay. That would be.
But we have not received, if you, to answer your question, we did not receive a request from them.
Yeah. When's the deadline for the request?
Mr. Chairman, the deadline, our process starts back in January and we request the forms to be turned in to us by April 1st.
I believe so, yes.
So that's how we can, that gives us enough time to review the applications and compile this list. So it would be outside of the normal process. So that, that's important to note as well.
So both of those would be?
Correct.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Mike, did the halfway house that presented at our last meeting, have they been told about this? How much does the city of Farmington provide to them? Do we know?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Beck said, we do know because they mentioned it in their presentation. They receive CDBG funding, Community Development Block grant funding. And I can get you the exact number, probably pull it up from there. Jim's going to probably look for it right now.
I know we used some from discretionary to, for, for this year. But I think moving forward, we ought to let them know about this process.
Sure, sure. Be happy to do so.
And on, as far as For said, is, do we know what the city of Farmington's planning on doing?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Beck said I do. I, I learned yesterday that the city of Farmington is going to contribute $50,000 next year. They were requested to do more and ultimately settled at the current year's contribution rate.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Stark, on the Navajo Senior Centers, I know they only give to certified chapters. Have you heard, gotten any letters from the non-certified chapters?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Totachini, I have not.
Okay.
Relative to their not receiving funding. Of course, we're, changed our practice upon receipt of a letter from the Navajo Nation Department of Justice saying that we could not contribute directly to non-certified chapters.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Cox did check the presentation from Byron's House of Hope last meeting and he mentioned a number, Mr. Myers did, regarding funding they received. So we'll have to follow up, it wasn't in their presentation. Any other requested changes or edits you'd like us to make?
Hey, Mr. Chair, if I may add, I didn't see it on here, just, just for awareness, the Northwest Mexico Council of Governments is also included in the budget based off of the recommended increase, I believe, 20,000.
So.
Conclude your presentation?
Yes, that concludes my presentation and I'll stand for any questions.
I think you did a good job.
Thank you.
Very good. Except for the small print.
They wanted to save trees.
And Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, in light of my comments previous, I might ask if you had any, any specific comments for the Water Commission or Communications? This would probably be a good time before we jump into some longer presentations. Oh, yes, we do have one, one informational item related to the Water Commission. That would be helpful to have that discussion. I don't know if Mr. Chavis, if you wanted to come forth for that or just stay where you're at?
I'm going to get out back here.
Okay.
What? Actually, I do have a question. No, I'm just, just curious. You reclassified it, you reclassified the GIS coordinator in starting a new position? I knew you weren't getting, get out of here without at least one question.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, yes, currently the Water Commission's has done a strategic plan and that plan has shifted the, the goals of the commission to start helping with community projects like infrastructure projects and efficiency projects. So we do have three projects on the docket and this position's going to help assist with funding, financing, planning. So we changed that GIS to a planner, grant writer, and a social media person.
So is it really a new position or are you just shifting the position you have?
It's a, it's a new position. We've never had this position before.
Are you, but you're not getting rid of your GIS coordinator?
At this time, it's on hold. We, we don't have a use for a GIS coordinator at this moment.
We don't have one on staff right now.
Okay, so it's, you're just trading one for the other? You're not?
Essentially, yes.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Beck said it's, it's a reclassification of an existing position.
And we do have our job posting out. If anyone's interested in working for the Water Commission, we do have an opening and we're accepting resumes until May 18th. For any other?
Yeah, just. And Mr. Chair, Commissioners, I wanted to bring something more informational for you today. So, so going through the process of certifying the mill rates last September, the state had changed the, the way that their, their system showed the, the mill rates, which actually brought to light something that we wanted to, to bring to you all for informational purposes. So, so as, as you're aware, there's a current JPA in place that says the Water Reserve Fund could take up to three mills of the county's total allowable, 25 mills. Currently, we're at eight and a half. Currently, the Water Reserve Fund is allocated a half a mill of the total eight and a half mills. Well, going through the, the process last year and working with the state and certainly thank you to Treasurer Tolby for, for helping us out with, with all this. But we're trying to figure out one specific, unique scenario that's, that's actually been statute for, for quite some time. And that's what we call the yield control formula. Ultimately, what yield control formulas do is they prevent a burden on the taxpayer. So, you know, as Ms. Martin mentioned, you know, our property values have, have skyrocketed, highest in the nation. Well, the yield control formula actually adjusts the, the amount that the county can get off of residential valuation, residential taxation. So it increases or decreases our mill rate that has been acted, enacted by the, the commission to, you know, to, to complete that. It's a very, very complex formula, very complex calculation. Well, historically, we've applied, the yield control formula itself is applied to all mills in place by the county commission. But previously, we've only But previously, we've only allocated the yield control formula to the county's portion of the mills, so eight mills. The Water Reserve Fund has received a half mill, and so it's really not been adjusted by this yield control. Well, going through this whole process and kind of bringing to light how the state's reporting it, you know, we really identified that, hey, we actually have been calculating the amount that the Water Reserve Fund gets incorrectly, because we're not applying that statutory yield control. We do have a larger legal size sheet that we put before you, just want for informational. It'd be certainly, we would need a decision from you all at a later date, but what we're looking at is do we keep the allocation as it is, which essentially gives a half mill to the Water Reserve Fund, or do we subject the Water Reserve half mill to the same yield control formula that the county is being allocated? If we do that, over to the far right of the spreadsheet, it has a column here, Water Reserve Adjustment. What it shows is roughly a hundred and twenty-five thousand has been allocated to the Water Reserve that technically, because of the statutory yield control formula, would have gone to the general fund. So in the last three years, the Water Reserve Fund was supplemented roughly three hundred and seventy-seven thousand. We did include also a column showing what the Water Reserve cash balance is, and really to show that, you know, how might this impact? And also, speaking of impact, this is specific to residential valuations only. It has nothing to do with non-residential. So it's a smaller portion of the overall, roughly one point eight million that the Water Reserve Fund gets. But just to show that, you know, whatever direction you decide, ultimately, do we subject it to yield control, or do we maintain at, you know, status quo? That's what the impact would be, roughly a hundred and twenty-five thousand. Again, it's just informational today. We will ask at a later date a decision. Miss Treasurer Tolby does need this for the next cycle of property tax bills. That won't come out till September, but really, we're looking at something with the final budget, just because it does have budgetary impacts. But again, you know, certainly thank you to Mr. Chavez, to Treasurer Tolby, you know, just really looking at this, because it's just something that, you know, it's a unique thing that, you know, this yield control formula has been, you know, on the books, on statute for quite some time. Predates the JPA, but it's just something that was never, never thought about. And so, you know, it's been supplemented every year, and it just so happened that, you know, with the state changing their, their system, ultimately saying, you know, these eight and a half mills are San Juan County's mills, it's just the fact that we have the JPA in place that allocates a portion, that brought that question.
What's the consequence if it doesn't get implemented? Is the state gonna say we're doing it wrong? Is it gonna pop up on the audit coming, moving forward?
Uh, no, great question, and it's nothing audit-related. It's, you know, we have eight and a half mills, we're collecting eight and a half mills. It's really up to the commission. You all as a whole, do you maintain half mill, or do you just subject that to the yield control? Uh, but yeah, no, great question, there is no ramification other than, you know, budgetary shift that either the, we would allocate it to San Juan County, or we keep it within the Water Reserve.
So the hundred, a hundred and twenty-five K, that'd be every single year?
Uh, yes, correct, to be fair.
What's going on?
Yeah, and it's subject to the yield control. So highly anticipate, because our valuations went up, that means our mill rate's gonna go down. And so we would actually see that allocation might be a little bit larger.
Could change.
It could change, correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
It could actually go up.
Yes, yeah, and it could go down. So we were actually, we were actually kind of on a trajectory where Assessor Voita had actually, you know, I've had some conversations about this, where part of the valuation is there's a three percent cap that you can't increase, you know, more than three percent per year. Well, residential valuation, we were getting close to that three percent cap, which meant every year, actually since I've been here, we've seen the mill rate slowly creep up to about eight and a half mills. If that were the case, that would reduce this down. So it just depends on kind of what happens, activity was.
Because when we originally started talking about it, it was substantially lower than one twenty-five.
Yeah.
I believe we were like thirty-three.
Right, right. And I, Mr. Chair, that was likely, going through the process, that was a bad calculation in my head. I'm gonna get that to you.
I just, I was just curious on that.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, change. And then my other question is for Treasurer. So if we do pass something like this, what work does it create? Does it create more work for you, is it easier for you?
Um, it wouldn't be any significant amount of work. I will just have to, when the yield control is adjusted, I'll just have to break out and basically do a ratio for San Juan County and then for the Water.
Right, and if we don't, then it just stays exactly the same?
The state already actually adjusts the San Juan County rate, so I would just have to take the point five straight up of that and apply that to the Water Commission. So, and it's, if it's any work, it's minutes, so.
I just don't want to create too much. I feel bad.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Chavez, I'd like to request that you send us articles on, you know, things that are happening with the water as far as like the Colorado River states, because I keep seeing in the paper, you know, Arizona's doing this, Utah's saying this, Colorado's saying this. And I know right now, we had a good melting snow, and some of the reservoirs and the lakes are refilling. But every now and then, if you come across a good article, share that with us.
Sure, sure, Commissioner Totodini, I don't mind. I don't know if the best route to go, send it to Mike or Devin, and they send it out. But yeah, there is a lot going on in New Mexico and in the basin. In fact, yesterday, I was in Las Vegas, Nevada, who are planning the Colorado River Water Users Association meeting, and the overall theme is a great year, a year of reprieve, and how can we make things work when we got a little bit of time or a little break? Because it's unknown if we're gonna have additional wet years, but this year is a great year. But we do need, there is that going on, and then the upper basin states and the lower basin states are getting together and discussing the issue and trying to come up with solutions.
Yeah, and I'm especially interested in the tribes. So if you come across anything of those.
There is, there is a lawsuit with the tribes and the federal government, and there'll be a decision in the first of May, and I can get that out to you.
Okay.
See, and see what it is. It's a water rights settlement.
Okay, thank you.
May. My other question was if, how would the yield control, if we do the yield control, how will that affect the Water Commission? Because you very submitted your budget.
Right now, it wouldn't affect the Water Commission, but I would like to review the sheet. This is, I got it today, I would love to review it and do an analysis on it. And then I would love to present this information, including Mr. Stark, to our board and get their opinion on it before we would make any decisions or anything like that.
And you need it by when?
Mr. Chair, we would for sure need it for Miss Tolby, sorry, Treasurer Tolby, by October at the latest. So ideally.
The end of September. So if you're, if it worked for you to present it to your September board meeting, that would be okay, but it could be no later than that.
However, budgetarily, to get it into the final budget, we would need it by.
The final budget, by June?
Yeah. And actually, Mr. Chair, to add to your question in terms of impacts to the Water Commission, it's, you bring up a good, good points. Obviously, we don't want any impacts there. As a reminder, there's two funds that the county has on the books for the Water Commission. One is Water Commission itself, that funds all of the annual operations. That fund is funded through the Water Reserve Fund. So we budget a transfer annually based off of the anticipated operations. So for that matter, FY twenty-four, what has been presented and approved by the Water Commission Board, that is what's presented, and that is a transfer from the Water Reserve. So any impact would be something that would be later, you know, subsequent fiscal years, dependent on planned activity for the Water Commission. But currently, the Water Reserve would continue to see an increase of annual cash flow.
Well, I think my, my other question is probably the dumbest question I'll ask today. I'm just, I have no idea. So does the city of Farmington, for example, do they have to worry about yield control? Do they have to report the same stuff to the state that?
Mr. Chair, great question. When you look at yield control, that is something that, that, yeah, it's not a dumb question, that's a really good question. Their school districts are subject to yield control. Several entities are, but it's a little bit more unique in the fact that we look at like a school district or college, if there's any type of bonded debt, that cannot be reduced. It's something that, like, school districts, as an example, Public Education Department, they said, hey, this is what the mill rate needs to be for this debt service, but their operational piece absolutely is adjusted.
Yeah, because I just, I wondered, whatever decision we make, how is it gonna affect them, all of us? Not that they couldn't handle it, but.
Mr. Chairman, can I interject here? So we actually collect property tax for the school districts and the city of Farmington. So any, anything we did would technically flow down, wouldn't it, through?
Yeah, and actually, it's, so as a, in September, when we go through the process of yield control or mill analysis, so the county commission itself orders, you know, the assessor to assess the valuation, and it's the total mill, it's, you know, the state, the school districts, the college, the county, all of those combined. But when we look at overall control of the mill, certainly goes through the Treasurer's Office a hundred percent, but it's their respective entities that go through, and they certify that calculation, yes, is correct, or no, it's not. They then work with, you know, Public Education Department or the state to get that corrected. But absolutely, it goes a hundred percent through the Treasurer's Office. Anything related to this is only specific to San Juan County. Nothing else changes for any of the other entities.
Mr. Chairman, to your point, maybe to even add a little to it relative to the city of Farmington, that, you know, they obviously have their operational mills that they collect on and are subject to yield control. So it would be similar to us making whole the city of Farmington or Bloomfield or Aztec on their difference on mill rate, is what we're doing today relative to the Water Commission and subsidizing them. But that may be a decision you would want to continue going forward to subsidize the Water Commission in that fashion. But we don't do that for the other entities that, that have mill rates, operational mill rates that are subject to yield control.
But none of those entities are that large.
Well, it varies, we could certainly get you the information relative to how much, how many dollars the city of Farmington or Aztec or Bloomfield are receiving. The Water Commission this year is budgeted for revenues of one point hundred and thirteen million, and a total transfer from the Water Reserve Fund, one point eight two million dollars. So the residential piece we're talking about, as you can see, is anywhere from a seven hundred, Mr. Tolby, or Treasurer Tolby, put together, you can see the collected seven hundred and eight thousand to seven fifty-eight. That's the residential piece only. The Water Commission is receiving the Water Reserve Fund, the full eight and a half mills on any commercial valuation. This is just the residential property that's subject to you.
Mr. Chairman, I might add that the seven hundred and eight thousand is only through April thirtieth. So by the time the June thirty collections, I would anticipate they'd be somewhere in line with the other two years.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Anything else?
No.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Chavez.
Thank you. Am I done for the day?
I will defer to the chair, but I believe so.
I would tax out.
Thank you, guys, appreciate it.
Got a cookie on the way out.
I'm gonna pass on that.
I'm sure he had plenty of cookies in Vegas.
No wrong Las Vegas.
Just kidding.
Las Vegas, not Vegas.
Is this a good time for a break? Does anybody need a break?
Yeah.
All right, let's take a, what, five minutes?
Okay.
Is that enough? Take a five-minute break? All right. Welcome back. Like a high school on its first day. All right, number two, consideration of the ARPA.
Mr. Chairman, if we could, um, we could certainly, um, take action on those items, but we, we do have a couple other presentations relative to budget. We'd like Ms. Wood to come up.
Sorry.
If that's okay with you, save those till the end. Uh, we, we'd like to talk about the proposed change. We, we touched on it earlier on the health plan, and, uh, and then also touch base with you on the recent, uh, compensation study we had done. So, we'll, we have Ms. Wood come up and, and allow her to talk about the, and you've got the right presentation in front of you. Why consider becoming a, a public bu- body under the State of New Mexico Benefit Plan, so.
Thank you, Mr. Stark. Melissa Wood, Benefits and Compensation Manager, in case you guys haven't met me yet. So, we're gonna talk about the why consider, uh, becoming a local public body under the State of New Mexico Benefit Plan. And, uh, Mike, did you want me to do highlights, or do you want me to go over the whole presentation as I've been doing?
Mr. Chairman, we'll defer to you. I know we independently provided a copy of this presentation to you, so we can, we can hit the highlights if you'd like. I know one of the things that you didn't have, and we briefed, uh, you independently, was, uh, comments that we'd received from our public information meetings and outreach to employees, and so that is included as a new part of this presentation. So, we'll, I'll defer to you as to how you'd like us to proceed there.
I like the highlights, but it's kind of.
Highlights is good for me. Wonderful.
More in depth, we can just ask questions.
Yeah. Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Okay. So, um, the, the whole presentation is identical to as presented before, except for, um, we did kind of put in a potential of what the plan would look like if we, um, were going to stay with the, the county self-administered plan. Uh, that is on page, um, six, seven, and eight. Uh, we do have a mock kind of, uh, proposed plan, uh, in column, uh, three on the plan-to-plan comparison on page six. So, if you have any questions about that or any guidance, um, let me know. Uh, but it's just showing what we would have to do if we were to, to stay self-insured. So, then, um, going to, way back here, page eighteen, it's the first, um, page of received comments and feedback. So, there's several pages. About twenty-three people, um, uh, provided feedback to us about what their comments were, or just ideas about, um, making this transition. Um, you'll see the word "in favor" a lot in a lot of these comments, a vote of yes. Um, so, I, 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 I felt pretty strongly in saying, cuz nobody verbalized it to me or writ- in writing, that we had no negative comments to this presentation. Um, everybody said they understand why we're making this recommendation or consideration, um, why it's needed. So, uh, lots of good things through it. One of the comments was, uh, San Juan College, uh, tier-two seems to be the most option as far as providers. Um, that's pretty standard as far as the network, you know. It's tier-one, tier-two, just depends on where you're at in, in any state, uh, for those kinds of plan designs. Um, as a reminder, the five plans that are offered by the state would be options to be selected by each individual if they were to get that option, to make that choice. Um, do, should I read each one of these comments, or do you want me to? No. I'm happy to do it, but, um, I really don't have a whole lot to add about it, uh, other than we did do a few in-person, uh, meetings. So, along with presenting to one individual department, I did three additional meetings. Um, that's on the very last page, which is, uh, page twenty-four. Um, on the twentieth, um, I met with Parks and Facilities at their staff meeting and presented to their personnel. The twenty-seventh, we, uh, had an open meeting with two employees here in the commission chambers. And then on May third, there was two meetings, one at ten AM and one at seven PM, to allow for varying shifts, where I spoke to eight employees overall, um, where they could ask questions and provide comments.
You didn't have any negative ones in there either?
No, sir. Lot of questions about, you know, what the transition would look like, accessing providers, those kinds of questions, but no negatives. And, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, any other questions, comments, concerns, anything I can address about the state plan?
Um, Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, the Presbyterian, the, if the worker employee goes with that, they go use that Presbyterian there where the old Brits used to be?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Todechini, my understanding is that, uh, Presbyterian is different than the Presbyterian in, uh, across, as far as a carrier.
Oh, okay.
I think it's a provider versus insurance.
Yes, sir. Although named the same.
Mr. Chair.
Uh, I wanna know how many of these comments are, are Mr. Stark's comments? How many times he submitted comments?
Commissioner, uh, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Beck said, actually, none of those are, uh, Mr. Stark's comments.
It's a good one.
He did not. We did not wanna show any bias in our presentation.
Well, I had spent quite a bit of time on it, looking through it, asking some questions, and I felt pretty comfortable with it. I mean, there's, there's a few things that may not be as good as the old plan, but overall, I think most of them are quite a bit better.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, I just had a question. And then you said also, local pharmacies would be used as well under these. Is that right?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Fortner, that is correct. We, under CBS Caremark, which is the, uh, pharmacy benefit manager underneath the state, uh, you can go back to, uh, in-person retail, uh, maintenance medication. So, right now, under ours, we are required to do maintenance meds through mail order. Um, so that would return as an option. The copay would be higher for a thirty-day under, under the plan, but it is an option.
Okay.
Oh, I appreciate that. That was a lot of work.
Thank you.
And so, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, um, assuming there's no objection, you know, uh, just a reminder that the reason we're, this is time now to, to bring this to you is, A, we need to capture any, any changes within the budget, of course. But secondly, we need to provide notice, uh, to the State of New Mexico by July first, so that this change will become effective January first for employees, which is our current, um, policy year. So, um, so what the, the thought would be is that we would include, um, half a year under the state plan. We're starting, well, half a year under the county plan, starting July first, and half a year under the state plan. And we would then allow Ms. Wood, with your vote on May twenty-third, this would be included, this change within the FY twenty-four interim budget. And, and when you're voting on that, you'd also be including this as the change, cuz that's how we would reflect numbers within the budget, as Ms. Martin, um, presented. So, just wanna make sure that you all were aware of that, and that, that if there's anything that comes up that we need to make changes to or address questions, we'd certainly wanna do that before the May twenty-third meeting.
All right. I think we're all, wanna take care of the employees first.
I think this is a good way to do that.
Yeah, so if it, if something else does come up before then, I'm sure you all just know.
You bet.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, appreciate it.
Thank you.
So.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, the other item we had for you is, is Ms. Martin had alluded to, we, um, this is the third year in a row that we've had a compensation, um, study done. Previous two years were, were performed by Salary.com. This year was performed by Valiant. This year was performed by Valiant, a state-based company that did a fantastic job this year. I know Ms. Wood will speak to that. But we want to share the results of that study with you. The results of that study were included within the interim budget. And just have her hit some of the highlights. But I know the one highlight I would like to hit is I can tell you that this has been invaluable, that we've gone through this process now for the third year to make certain, especially at this time in which post-COVID recruitment and retention of employees has become very difficult. It was difficult prior, but it became even more so. And making sure that we're paying market rates, that we have both internal equity within the county and external equity outside of the county with our compensation is critical to us being able to provide and have the employees, the good, talented employees that we've benefited from through time to be able to provide services to our citizens. And so I'd like to turn the time over to Ms. Wood and kind of at a high level again, if that works for you, run through the compensation study and hit the salient points.
All right, thank you, Mr. Stark. Mr. Chair Commissioners, so I see you all have found your little bright blue presentation. So these were the slides presented to us on the final study by Valiant. I'd just like to talk about Valiant real quick with some of their information from talking to them a few times and their website. So they are, the Valiant Group has been providing HR consulting services since 1998. They specialize in compensation, training, and human resource consulting for tribes, tribal entities, and tribally-owned organizations. Their clientele includes native organizations through the 48 states. And then the mission of Valiant is to help organizations create measurable results through their most valuable asset, their people. And their mission statement, which I think is great, is just to be impressive in everything they do. So, and they were very impressive in their process, how they related to us and how they took care in providing us, I think, a great product. So they were very great to work with. My main contact was Kim Della Filippis. And she is one of their, there she is. She is their, she's their VCG. She's been with them for, since the beginning. So she's been with them for quite a while. And she's just very knowledgeable and had nothing great, nothing bad to say about San Juan County and was just great overall to work with. So they had their whole team when they presented. Their project was just to give us market values. They didn't really, they looked at our positions at our job descriptions as written and provided values based on the market for those positions. Slide three, project deliverables. They can do other things, you know, they can report on anomalies. They can do a total analysis, top to bottom. But we asked them to just look at our, to make sure that we are comparably as far as market values are concerned. We are going to reach out to them, hopefully in the future, and have them do a couple of position and maybe job description reviews and just make sure that we're staying competitive and comparable across the board on those as well. So there you determine the appropriate scope of the data to be used, budget size, staff size, type of organization, and location. So they're not, they're making sure that they're pulling the right data for who we are as San Juan County. They gather from multiple compensation surveys and public employers, which I'll show you that on page five. And then, like I said, they match it to how our job description is written to make sure that they're getting an apples-to-apples match. They use Bureau of Labor and Statistics, O-NET, Comp Analyst, U.S. Department of Labor, World at Work, and their own database from past employers that they've utilized, as well as current employer data. They compared us with Burnaleo County, City of Farmington, La Pata County, Sandoval County, Santa Fe County, and State of New Mexico. So they really took care to make sure that they were comparing us to entities that made sense. Page, sir, slide six is pretty exciting. Overall, structure is aligned with market with less than a 1% difference between market averages and salary range midpoints. We're pretty proud of that. Fifty-four positions are paid at a higher value than what market is currently set for 4%. And then 92 positions are being paid lesser than the market according to where we are. Our overall goal for this proposal to you, what is in the budget, is those positions that were 4% or more below the allotted market are being proposed to move to that market value or close to. The last slide is just questions. So that brings us to this wonderful stapled-together packet that you have here, the San Juan Market Findings Review. So should be about six pages. This is alphabetized by department, and then within the department is each position. Off to the far, what's that, right of the page? All the oranges are the ones that are recommended to be moved. As you flip through, you'll see light, light blue-colored lines, like on page three. These are positions that were newly valued or newly added back in. So those are highlighted for you.
Newly as in last year or this coming?
This coming year.
Mr. Chair, just to clarify that, they were positions that we were anticipating there could be a need for some movement. So for example, I think you're on page three.
Yes.
You know, the community development, building inspection. A category of position we didn't have was the senior building inspector, that we know that there may be a need for promotional opportunities. Likewise, when you look at information systems, we previously didn't have a generalist, one, we had an information systems generalist one, but not an information systems generalist two or three. And same thing, wanting to make certain that when we have folks that are reaching, have a necessary skill set and certifications, that there'd be an opportunity for advancement and compensation to accommodate that. And so that's just an example of some of those services or some of those positions that either didn't exist or in some cases were reclassified to.
Yeah, like on that same page with the information systems, there's the paralegal and legal assistant.
Yeah.
Those were, the paralegal was increased from the current legal assistant, and then the legal assistant was reclassed to be a higher level.
What page is that on?
I wish I had put page numbers on these, but I did not.
You have a legal department?
Four, five, six. It should be page seven for you if you're.
Oh, alphabetic, I need to know my alphabet.
Alphabet, yeah, by department, yes. Do, Mr. Chair Commissioners, I know this is a lot of information to review, but if you have any questions, I'm happy to address those. But this, this should, this compares or matches what Ms. Martin has already presented to you as far as the merit budget adjustments.
Have we, have we looked at?
Salary adjustments, sorry.
The ones that are over the market value now? Is that a result of our prior entity? That, did they miss, apply our positions to? Do you see what I'm getting at?
I do.
Did they overvalue and we bumped them up? And now they're way overvalued? What happened there to explain that?
So Commissioner Beck said, Mr. Chair, so the, the values for a position kind of ebb and flow. One year, that position could be in high demand, and so you'll see it be a little higher value. And then next year, it might not be. It could just be that at that pinpoint in time when it was valued, it was in high need, and so it had a higher market. There is a possibility that previously a position was matched at maybe a higher level.
It just seems odd that in the previous reports that we've gotten, it's everybody was either at or below. But now with this one, we have some that are substantially above and substantially below. It just, it just seems like a different report than the previous years that we've got.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I think it'd be important to add that, you know, these are the market midpoints that were evaluated. And so to your point and to what we saw with Salary.com, it very well could be a difference between midpoints that they had for specific positions versus now Valiant's review of that job description and position. I can tell you my personal experience, and of course, Ms. Wood, would probably be best to share this with you, because I wasn't directly involved in day-to-day conversations with Valiant. They did a very thorough review of our job descriptions.
Is it, is it a better analysis with them being local than with jobs.com or?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Beck said absolutely. And the reason being is, look at, we were able to tell them this time who the comparable employers are that we really match up to. You know, our direct competition here is the City of Farmington, is up in Durango with La Pata County. We also compare well to the Class A counties, you know. So Sandoval County is a Class A county that they actually, Valiant, was doing their market study for them. In fact, that's one of the suggestions I had on, recommendations from the county manager in Sandoval County, that they'd been very impressed with the job that Valiant had done. So we know we were going to have direct comparisons to Sandoval County, who's a like-sized county to us, both in population. They're a little closer to the metro Albuquerque area. So that probably, you probably see a little higher salaries as a result of that. We don't compare as well to entities such as Toniana County, who's a like-size, is a like-size, actually a little larger, Class A county. But they generally have lower market rates for their pay. I think that has more to do with the region in which the state they're located. And so that doesn't help us. When we're, our competition here is, you know, like I said, the City of Farmington and some of the local governmental entities up north. That's who we're competing with to recruit and then retain our employees. And that's, that's really a big part of why I, once again, just want to thank you for your previous commitment, the last two years, now three years, to have this done. Because this is important for our employees to show that we're evaluating this. We care about making sure that there's the right market pay for them and that they're being paid accordingly and they're not being paid, you know, sub-market rates. Because it's, the challenges have become very great in the employment market. And we are, we are, we are competing against a lot of other entities. And we compare to government entities, but private sector.
Yeah.
We're never going to compare to them.
No.
Our only hope is that with a fair market rate, with good benefits, which we just talked about that, and having some of the other, you know, medical benefits but ancillary benefits that go with employment here, as well as a recruitment tool that is helpful for some, not necessarily newer employees, but the access to a defined benefit pension plan is helpful too. But it takes the right person to want to see the value in going to work in the public sector. It's not always easy work. It can be very difficult day-to-day. So we want to make sure this is, this pay is definitely market and that we can, we can make sure that our employees know that this is being studied on an annual basis.
Thank you, Mr. Stark. I do want to add, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Beck said, that although the difference, we are above midpoint, it's just that we are paying better currently than that midpoint is, is being reflected across the market. That could change the next month. Next month, we could be equal to that market. Then the month after next, we could be below that market. It just, it's changing so fast right now with COVID causing such a flux in what people are wanting to do. A lot of people aren't even wanting to come and work in an office anymore. They want to work at home. So by pulling in those, paying a little bit better, sometimes it does entice them to make that change back to the office.
Mr. Chair, I had a question. So where it's in the blue, some of them say new, new, and other ones are just have the number. Are those ones that have been frozen or what's different?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Fortner, that's a good question. So new is ones that did not have a job code yet assigned to them. Ones that have job codes are usually either reclassified positions. They were already allocated a job code and they had some modifications, like the paralegal and the legal assistant. Or they've already gone through the process of being reviewed by Ms. Martin and Ms. Padilla, and they've gone through all the workflow to already be implemented, and we have people in those positions.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions on the market findings? What? All right.
Thank you, Melissa. And I do want to thank Melissa for her hard work on both of these endeavors. That requires a lot of her time. This all came together at the same time to gather all this information, to conduct input meetings with employees. It's, I, I'm glad she's still with us. So.
I knew she could handle it.
I'm tired, I'm not going anywhere.
She's had help from HR with Roberta and Tara as well, but specifically, she's been working very hard on these two topics and putting a lot of time and effort into it. So I want to recognize that.
Thank you. Mr. Chair Commissioners, I appreciate your time, and I look forward to hearing any follow-ups. Thank you.
We sure appreciate you and all your hard work.
Thank you.
I know the employees will too.
I hope so. Thank you.
We have 92 of them.
92 of them.
Mr. Chair, we wanted to really talk about, kind of as an update of all of our projects, Mr. Smith has prepared a great presentation that he wants to go over it. I guess not a presentation, but a summary.
How much of a presentation, but? Mr. Chair Commissioners, you find in your.
Which is complete charts? Still looking. Hold on, hold on. Give us, just give me just a minute.
Very bottom of the pile.
There, he shuffled his pile a few times.
As you can see, it starts out with some of our state-funded projects. Those are state grants that we deal with. Some of the projects on there, Curly Walkout, the film studio at the Toad's Theater, River View Golf Course Project. And using the achievement software that we purchased last year, kind of gives you this nice graphic representation of where we're at on each project. You can see the values of the project below. We have several projects with San Juan Regional Medical Center. As you probably know, we're the owners of that property and lease it to the operation of the hospital there. And so we are very involved with a bunch of the upgrades and ongoing improvement of that facility. See what else do we have? There's all kinds of stuff. A lot of public works projects. You can see those road projects, bridge projects. Five Mile Bridge is on there. The study that was done for that to try to determine whether or not to keep that open or, you know, close that out. You can see that that one's almost to completion, which you guys are all familiar with. On that last page of the state-funded projects, another one, big intro. Well, the Cedar Hill Boat Ramp, you can see is almost completely finished up. The Sheriff's Office Helicopter Replacement is on there. That is ordered, and hopefully we get that by the end of the year this year. It's supposed to be delivered in December. So that's a big, exciting one that we are, we're waiting on. You can see that we got some funding for a new fire apparatus for our fire department, first responders to get a, hopefully to go towards getting a new vehicle to help their response. Industrial Park Improvements, that was, that was an interesting one. Trying to run a new gas line, New Mexico Gas Company, getting a new gas line to eliminate the reliance on propane at that facility for heat and energy. We actually came out, you know, COVID and everything else, original estimates to do that came up $1.1 million short by the time all the new construction costs, material costs, and everything else were factored in. And Mr. Stark and everybody, they were able to negotiate with, with the state and get that additional $1.1 million to fund that project. And so that is going. with the state and get that additional one point one million dollars to fund that project. And so that is going to happen and gonna run a gas line to that facility to hopefully make it uh appealing for somebody to move into and and uh get some industry rolling back again here in the county. Oh, what else? East Cold Pepper Flats. Um, that's one that Mr. Cox has been working on pretty hard here. Um North Star Water Users is extending service to a subdivision out on the Light Plant Road, uh, kind of a remote subdivision. Those those residents have been hauling water for a number of years. And so that's that's a neat project to kind of see come to completion and get those guys water service and utilities out there and make it a make it a nice place to live. Nicer place to live, I guess, just to say it's beautiful out there. Be really nice when you don't have to haul water to your house for sure. More capital. So let's see, we move into uh federal ARPA funding uh type of projects. Um, there's a big one on here that that uh Mr. Stark, Mr. Cox have been working on, uh, the Tota Subdivision Water, uh, Water and Wastewater Project. Um, I've heard it numerous times how unique this project is and to be able to get that amount of funding, uh, once again, a subdivision there in Farmington, unincorporated part of Farmington. Uh, they're right there. They might as well be in the city, but they're not quite within the line. Um, those folks have been living on well water and uh septic systems that are maybe less than ideal and down there on the water table with the river and everything, uh managed to get a ten million dollar project funded to actually connect those folks to the city of Farmington, uh, water and wastewater system. So that's a pretty huge project. I think uh those people were a little uh skeptical at first, maybe, or or maybe didn't want to lose some of uh the amenities that they they had grown accustomed to, but I think everybody's come around and they're very excited about it and that project is moving forward.
It, Mr. Chairman, if I could, uh, just a quick update, you know, we we had a public, another public meeting um with the the community down there a couple of weeks ago and Mr. Smith was was in attendance as well as Mr. Perel. And uh, we're looking to have that project um design completed by August and out to bid shortly thereafter. And then it's about a year for construction. So um, just to give you an update. And that's to Mr. Porter's point about why we're bringing these to you. Some of these projects will finish up uh in this next fiscal year. Some of these will carry on into the next fiscal year, but we wanted to provide you a a comprehensive list of all of our project, capital projects that we're um managing right now and and hope to add more to the to the inventory. Once we receive some hopeful good news from the Office of Natural Resources Trustee of which a million dollars, if we're so lucky, would be added to the Tota Subdivision Project to give us an eleven million dollar.
Still waiting to hear on that.
Uh, I believe their comment period closed. Uh, the it closes the end of this month and we'll hear shortly thereafter.
Is that the same money for the or or the N M S U four H building?
Mr. Chairman, it is, as well as boat ramp improvements to McGee Park and Lions Park and park improvements to Lions Park.
Sir, thanks, Mr. Stark. Uh, another good one on here, the Training and Wellness Facility at the Adult Detention Center um to provide, you know, some uh just to added benefit to to those folks that are working so hard up there at the A D C, the correctional officers and everything else. Um, it's going to give them a nice place to exercise, workout, go take a break, you know, if they are working those long shifts, hopefully give them a place to go and at least get a nap before they have to turn around and 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 go again. So that's a pretty s- pretty exciting project. Um, and Miss Riverbank Stabilization, probably very, very important this year, being as we're expecting the heavy runoff. Um, uh, Public Works and Mr. Perel were able to get that one completed and in time for, uh, I I've heard the comment made that uh if it hadn't happened this year, that we might have lost South Side River Road down there. So that one's exciting. Um, again, more uh A D C stuff, got a new up updated camera system for them to help them do their job and and make their job a little little easier. Uh, Waterflow Sleeping Quarters for firefighters um out there in the the Kirtland area. Um, trying to improve that. That one's almost done. Um, more bridge replacements, making progress on those, keeping our roads and infrastructure going. Let's see, federally funded projects, um ADA improvements at county facilities. Um, that's going well. Um, we've made a bunch of improvements at McGee Park um down here at the oh, the, I call it the Fire Department Building, but it's a community resource, I believe, building down here.
Fire operations.
Fire operations. There we go.
But community development is housed there.
There we go. Um, and that's uh wheelchair access, new handrails, uh, keeping up with the new ADA standards. Uh, parking lot features you'll see out here in our parking lot. We have new parking spaces that uh that are ADA compliant and better better help serve those folks um that that might need that. Um, more industrial park improvements, that kind of goes along with the natural gas line that we were talking about. Um, we're working with architects on that and very near the completion of uh construction drawings. So that can go out to bid and hopefully get that project, uh, get get that facility up and current and and ready for someone to move into. And uh hopefully um get some manufacturing going and and provide some jobs and uh just uh help our community out. Uh, Freight Railroad Planning Study, Mr. Stark's been working on. Um, I think that's been going pretty good. Um, planning the second round of public information meetings for June twenty first and twenty second. Um, Sam One Regional Medical Center Generators, E D A Grant Improvements. Um, but uh geez, I think I'm getting that one confused with another.
So, Mr. Chair Commissioners, that one uh is actually a kind of a dual purpose grant. It was it was one of the COVID related uh grants. And so uh for Sam One County itself, uh, we were awarded uh to purchase two generators, one at McGee Park and one at Sheriff's Office. It's it's meant to be um, you know, a backup if if uh power were to go out, the intent was that we could still provide services during COVID. Um, weird, we're speaking about it right now, um, just due to the fact of of supply chain. Uh, we just received the the generators and so it's it's been a very long running project. Uh, but additionally, with with this grant, uh, we were awarded dollars for Sam Regional Medical Center uh related to telehealth, uh, again, um, for COVID purposes. Uh, we were just uh successful in going out to bid to purchase uh several pieces of equipment to upgrade their uh telephone system for for telehealth. Uh, and so that that project will continue uh as equipment arrives. Uh, unfortunately, a lot of that equipment, uh, all of it is required to come um at once to be installed. Well, some of those pieces of equipment also have very long lead times. And so we're just trying to um get go through that process to make sure that that it arrives.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Fox. So in any case, um I think that kind of gives you a run. Obviously, I guess I didn't go through every every single project on here, but hopefully this is a good list and a good visual for you all. Um, if there's any specific questions about any one project you may see on there, be glad to attempt to answer any questions you may have or defer to someone else who may be able to answer a little better than I.
Mr. Chair Commissioners, I'll add, uh, you know, it's we're very, very fortunate to have you all uh allow us to apply for some of these grants and to um really um direct the the allocation of of funding, whether it be internal or through uh the 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 ARPA funding. Uh, because as you can see, there there's a very large list of of all of the the various projects that are happening uh throughout the county. Um, you know, and and so from a citizen standpoint, very exciting to see a a lot of progress being made. Um, but it's it's also something that, as I mentioned, looking at the thirty year capital plan. Um, you know, and we look at all these different projects and um then for that matter, when you look at the the I C I P plan uh that you have as a handout as well. Um, you know, we 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 try to find a any source possible of of funding to to get these projects in place. And um, you're just just through this this uh document from a T V it, you can see, you know, all those various funding sources. Um, so it's it's really a good to see. Uh, I will add to you on those those graphs for for project status. Um, you might be wondering, like, you know, we we, um, Mr. Smith talked about the sheriff's helicopter. It's a zero percent. It it's, we're trying to have a standardized recording and so it's expenditure based. And so because there's been a lot of work then on the helicopter, we've gone out to bid, it's been awarded. It's just for the fact that it has to get um manufactured. We have zero across and that's why it's showing a zero. Um, so know that while some of those say zero, it's there's been a lot of work made. We haven't had any dollars out there. Which project is off track? Um, it shows it in the on the very first page, but I don't see any yellow graphs inside the document.
Whale.
Question.
I would have to go back and look for you. It's uh the way you map out these visuals and and the way they make connections. I'm still not super proficient at it. Uh, I must have missed that one when I was looking at it. I know one that was for sure that may not got updated is one of the Sam One Regional Medical Projects. Uh, the grant was coming due and uh we were waiting on it to get reauthorized and it did get.
He didn't have an expended everything.
Yeah, and it did get reauthorized and uh I believe that one should be on track and that could very possibly be the one that uh is included in that pie chart, but uh does not have a percent complete on it.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Beck said we'll get that updated accordingly. Uh, have any other questions? Anyone else?
I just had a question. So on the um capital projects, it says uh S J C the uh match is forty K, but over on this other one, um it just shows on the film in uh Tocaw Theater and Batlock matches two seventy five K. The batch comes from the county also?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you, Mr. Smith. Mr. Chairman, that concludes um all staff's presentations relative to the budget and and would be happy to uh now entertain the two action items that we had on the agenda today, unless you all had additional questions. Uh, no questions? Sweet. All right. Finally, number two, consideration of ARPA. Cox again.
Uh, yeah, Mr. Chair Commissioners.
I used you up on your last.
Yes, I I uh I thoroughly enjoyed the workshop. Um, within the uh the large um stack of papers, there's there's three uh documents related to um ARPA. Uh, all of these that I I believe you're familiar with, uh, with us mailing out. Um, we did uh just recently complete the uh first quarter report uh to the U S Treasury. Um, you know, that that is due was due by the end of April. Uh, we uh knowing that we had a uh this budget meeting coming up, we we uh um wanted to just provide you uh with with summaries of of where all of those projects are at. Uh, but also, uh, we're coming before you to ask that we reallocate the remaining dollars of of um what's available or what was left that was held as a contingency uh and or unallocated. And the reason why we're we're asking to fully allocate now is is uh there's been a lot of of talk at the federal level about trying to um claw back any unobligated funds um related to ARPA. Uh, apparently there's there's a lot of funding that that hasn't you know, been claimed for a specific purpose. Uh, and um, so we wanted to show our um best um in terms of due diligence to show we've we've fully allocated the funds. Now, the U S Treasury has a a definition of of obligating funds um all the way up to, you know, to contract or purchase order. Uh, some of these projects, like with the Torsaw Water Wastewater. Um, you know, the the we're hoping that with the commission allocating those funds essentially obligating it at our county level, uh, that that will be sufficient for uh at for the U S Treasury to see that we've we've got those funds claimed. Um, you know, we we've just mentioned that we're going through that engineering um review that that the design is is close to completion. Uh, we'll go out to bid and and, you know, until we go out to bid, we really can't get that contract in place.
When's the deadline?
Uh, for obligation.
Just go to the top, I'll give it.
Uh, currently, uh, we have till December thirty first, twenty twenty four to oblige all funds. That was what was uh stipulated in the U S Treasury's final rule, uh, which is essentially the the um the guidance behind this this uh pot of money. But unfortunately, um, a lot of bills are getting introduced to say, if it's not obligated now, we're going to claw it back. Uh, so while the final rule says we have till December thirty first, twenty twenty four, we just want to have it on the books that we're showing it's going somewhere. And so what we've done, there's so there's two sheets and they look very similar. Um, the only difference is once they've last updated uh today, May ninth, and the other one says last updated April twentieth. Um, the purpose of of both of these sheets is to show uh for the one off for April twentieth. Uh, if we look at the adjusted budget of one hundred thirty three thousand four hundred four dollars of remaining contingency um in unallocated dollars, what we're hoping today is is to seek guidance and or approval from you all to allocate those those dollars. And so when we look at uh, how might we allocate those those monies to the the current projects that we have in place? We we did look uh to the fact that uh, you know, the the federal emergency health order has now expired. Uh, COVID is no longer in existence as an emergency. Um, and and so when we look at that, uh, the only specific thing that changed at the federal level that we couldn't use ARPA dollars for was was premium pay. Uh, we were fortunate not that did not affect us. Uh, we weren't um doing any more premium pay. Um, actually, for prior allocation, you all um approved up for us to to stop the um overtime shift stipend, which was the last part that was would be um transferred there. So um we didn't have to worry about that. The other part was was this top category, public health. Public health related a lot to specific uh COVID direct expenditures, uh, whether it be um through P P E, whether it be through um indirect um payroll costs and or then time allocated to COVID. Uh, because the emergency declaration is is over, uh, what we're proposing is today is is removing all remaining allocation of the COVID medical expenses, uh, so reducing that budget down by seventy four thousand nine twenty one. Uh, and then the the, we did have a little bit of an overrun on the COVID expenditures uh by eleven hundred dollars. We're adding budget to get that down to zero. Uh, but we're fully uh requesting that we we zero that allocation. So we would have premium pay complete, public health would be complete. So the remaining categories that we'd be working out of is infrastructure. Those those allocations, uh, we're we're not proposing to change. Uh, the public sector capacity, that won't change from, um, we do have one final uh bucket of money. Um, what they call the hiring to prove pandemic level. Uh, so we are allocating some costs there, but we do anticipate continuing that for the next um two to three quarters. Uh, but then the final allocation is is actually going all the way down to this public sector revenue uh category. Uh, the through uh the time from the last allocation, we did have a couple of change orders. Uh, one to the Waterflow um Sleeping Quarters and then also to the the A D C um camera system upgrade. And so what we're requesting of you all today is allocate some additional dollars to cover those change orders um that would zero out um all current contractual obligations to complete those projects. And then lastly, uh, we um had previously allocated additional dollars to the A D C Training and Wellness Center and uh just kind of considering that um where costs have been, uh, we know that there's a lot of cost overruns. We know that uh things just just continue to go up in price and and we know that we still need to uh furnish the building. And so what we're requesting is is all remaining dollars, one hundred fifty eight thousand be allocated to um the A D C Training Wellness Center. Uh, with you all's approval today uh of reallocating these dollars, we would show that that um as of of today uh we would fully uh oblige, um, what what we consider obligating the county commission to those specific projects to pull twenty four million seventy seven thousand three hundred and eighty eight dollars. Uh, just just for your information, as of the last quarter, uh, we did spend nine million uh dollars of that twenty four uh fifteen being remaining. Uh, if if you look at those categories, the large uh portion is the Tota Subdivision. Again, once the design is complete and we get that uh project bid, uh, we'll be, you will see a lot more movement of those those funds.
Are we going to beat any federal bills that are going to start clawing at back? I think we'll be done with that.
Um, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Beck said, great question. Um, I, it depends. Now, if you're asked your personal opinion, would it pass the federal level, you know, through? I I don't think any bill while they're getting um introduced. I, I don't think any bill, while they're getting introduced, I, I don't think it would make it all the way, so it's, it's...
So the ones that have been introduced haven't gotten close?
They haven't. It, it's gotten close enough for NACO and, and actually the municipal league to really step in and, and say, hey, you know, reach out to anybody that you can to express the importance of, of these dollars. But, but again, we're just trying to be as proactive as we can and showing that we've allocated those funds to the best of our ability. Mr. Chair, with that, I'll stand for any additional questions or, or requests, guidance on your reallocating those dollars or the approval of this proposed plan?
I don't have any. Anybody else?
Mr. Chair, I'd move that we approve the reallocation provisions as presented.
I would second that.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion will carry.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Thanks for taking care of us for so long. All right, number three, consideration of approval of Resolution 222362, providing additional compensation to the county assessor and appraiser. Mr. Swain?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. In the 2023 legislative session, the legislature amended Section 4-39-4 and 4-39-5 to increase the amounts payable for Appraiser 1, 2, 3, and 4 Appraiser certificates. So if the commission approves Resolution Number 222362, the county assessor and appraisers in the county assessor's office will receive the maximum amounts available for the qualification levels they have achieved. And traditionally, the commission has awarded those amounts for the, for the additional certification levels. The additional amount received by the assessor will be $5,500 for an Appraiser IV certificate, and the appraisers will receive an additional $1,500 for an Appraiser IV certificate. So the amendments to Section 4394 and 4395 make the amounts received by the assessor and the appraisers in his office equal. Formerly, there was some confusion because appraisers earned more for the same qualification level, so now, now they'll be even. I did want to let you know that there's a little bit of a difference between county attorneys on whether the Appraiser IV, well, the, whether these certificate, certification levels can be applied currently to the assessor. That's because Article 10, Section 1 prohibits county officers from receiving raises in salary during their terms. But based on Attorney General's opinions that I've reviewed, I believe that that only applies to base pay. It doesn't apply to certification levels because that is additional pay based on additional qualifications. So I believe that, that, that constitutional article only prohibits an increase in base pay being applied during the assessor's current term. But I did want to make, make you aware of that. So if Resolution 22-2362 is approved, an increase of $23,250.26 will be included in the FY 2024 final budget. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
I mean, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Ultimately, the, the legislature says we have to do it, right?
Yes, it's, to me, it's pretty clear that that's what the legislature intended by the way they amended it. But, and frankly, there was this 1971 opinion. This law was, the initial law was put into effect in 1968. There's a 1971 Attorney General's Opinion by Ann Bingham, and she, and she interpreted it the way I'm interpreting it right now. Grace Phillips, who's the Legislative Council with New Mac, wasn't aware of that opinion, and she put out an opinion that was contrary to what I was saying, saying that the constitutional amendment prohibited that. So I feel comfortable relying on that, that other Attorney General's opinion and, and giving this advice. I guess if, I guess it'd be the Department of Finance. Ultimately, if they disagree, they would try to challenge it, but I feel pretty confident that, that this is legally permissible.
Just more unfounded mandates?
Yes, I guess that is. Didn't think of it that way.
All right, any other questions? Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, if, if so approved, those additional increments, they actually are included in the interim budget that was presented to you today, so... All right.
Mr. Chair, I'd move to approve Resolution Number 222362.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion will carry. Good news today is there is no closed session. So we will adjourn.